And I appreciate you doing that, Maggie. Thank you. Introduction and first read of an ordinance amending the definition of tax administrator in section 3.08.020 of the Fountain Valley Municipal Code to allow for delegation of duties to a designee. Presentation by Colin Burns, our attorney for the city. Welcome, Colin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city has a TOT ordinance. Pursuant to that ordinance, hotel operators required to collect a percentage of gross revenues from persons who rent rooms and then remit that to the city. Our ordinance says that a tax administrator has responsibility of reviewing TOT remittances. And in the case where there's a concern that some, that an operator isn't submitting enough TOT to investigate the facts, impose a recommended TOT, give a hotel operator a chance for a hearing, and if the hotel operator asks for a hearing, to hold a hearing, then issue a decision, and then try to collect. So it's a lot of work for one person. Currently, our code says that the tax administrator is the finance director and the finance director alone. So if, in the instance that the finance director has a few hotels that he or she is investigating, we wanted to give the finance director the option of designating this task to somebody else. So the ordinance presented for council consideration is to allow the finance director or the city manager to designate another person to serve as tax administrator to help take some of that burden. I'm here if you have any questions.
Councilmember Harper.
Yeah, I have a question. Would this allow multiple tax administrators? Is, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's my question.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Councilmember Keneen. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Constantine. Let's vote. Nice job, Colin.
Item number 13 passes 5-0.
All right. Let's go to item number 14. Accept the bids and award a construction contract to Creative Home Corporation, DBA CHI Construction for project number 24040, Phase IV Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $276,192. Presentation by Justinia Penalosa, Assistant Engineer. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, City Mayor, City Manager, and council members. My name is Justinia Penalosa. I'm the Assistant Engineer under the Public Works Department here at the City of Fountain Valley, and I'll be presenting to you Phase IV Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. So first off, I'm going to be talking about the project background and scope. The last sewer manhole project that we completed was approximately back in 2017. And this Phase IV Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project will allow proper maintenance access to the city's sewer mains. This project will also provide the following improvements. First, rehabilitate N or coat lining of 40 sewer manholes. Second, rehabilitate existing manhole steps. Third, replace sewer frame, ring, and covers. And lastly, restore asphalt pavement around manholes identified for replacement. Next, I'll talk about the bidders list results. On March 28, 2024, the city publicly advertised this project. On April 18, 2024, the city received three bids. And Creative Home Corporation, also known as Chi Construction, was lowest responsible and responsive bidder, who bid in the amount of $276,192. Next, I will talk about the project costs and budget. The total project budget was $310,000. The total anticipated project cost came out to be $305,000. This shows that the anticipated project cost is sufficient to the total project budget. And this project is funded by the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Lastly, staff recommends that city council accept the bids and award a construction contract to Creative Home Corporation, DBA Chi Construction, for project number 24040, Phase IV Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project, in the amount of $276,192. And that concludes my presentation for Phase IV Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. I'm available if you guys have any questions.
Well, thank you for that report. I appreciate that. Question for you. So you mentioned this comes out of a special fund, so this is not coming out of the general fund. This is coming out of the sewer fund. Just want to confirm.
Yes, it's coming out of the sewer fund.
Okay. Any other questions by council?
You have a question.
Councilmember Harper?
So can you go back to the first slide that showed like the cross-section of the sewer? So it said that this was last completed in 2017. So do we have to do this every seven years for all the sewer manholes? Or how long do the manholes last?
I'll have Temmo, our director, speak upon that.
She promoted me. It's actually deputy director. Thank you, though.
No, thank you for the question. So we do it on an as-needed basis. A part of our assessment comes by way of our, looking at our sewer master plan and the needs that have not been addressed there, along with our sewer crews. They do a really good job of assessing our pipelines, our manholes, and their conditions. And so what we do is, between the annual maintenance and assessment of our sewer crews and what they detail our needs are, and the balance of what we don't address through paving roadway projects where we also will at least address the ring and cover of the manholes, whatever that balance is, we'll wrap it into a capital, a separate capital improvement project just like this.
So about how long does a typical manhole last? I'm just curious.
You know, actually, I have our field services manager here. You can speak to that.
Is he the director?
No. Mark's right, Field Services Manager. These are all actually original manholes, so they've been out there 60, 50 years. So these are just rehabilitating them. So if they're old brick ones, they'll go through, they'll make repairs. If they're concrete ones, the same thing, they'll make crack repairs, and then they'll seal them so that they don't have any more water damage or H2S gas damage that causes the failures in those. So it's just a rehabilitation. It's not a full replacement of the manhole shaft.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So responsibility for this, is this a city responsibility versus OC SAN or another agency? And at what point in this diagram is it OC SAN versus the city?
So the city has its own wastewater collection system. So all the houses and everything and all the tracks, those are all city-owned facilities. Eventually, the main materials have the much larger trunk lines that feed to OC SAN District. So our lines all at some point dump into their lines. But all of the infrastructure before it gets there is our responsibility.
That makes sense. Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that. Any other questions from council? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Constantine.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Let's vote. Thank you.
Item number 14 passes 5-0.
All right. Item number 15. Waive the bidding requirements pursuant to Fountain Valley Municipal Code 2.36.070, Par IV, and authorize staff to issue a purchase order to National Auto Fleet in the amount of $208,436.42 for the purchase of a 2024 Ford Superduty F-550 truck with crane and liftgate for the Water Division of Public Works through the existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell, and authorize staff to dispose of the existing vehicle by means that best meets the city needs. Presentation by Mark Sprague. Welcome back, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So yeah, so tonight, this is the purchase of a F-550 Superduty truck. This is used by the Water Department for emergency repairs and maintenance, has the large cranes, so they're able to pick up large valves, pipes, hydrants. We had budgeted $200,000 for this. The truck has exceeded its useful life, and it's actually been down and out of service because of its ECM, the Engine Control Module, basically the computer that controls the emissions, is not operating correctly, so it can't pass smog. So it's actually been down and out of service. We've tried to get replacements in parts that are obsolete. We've tried rebuilding it, and we haven't been able to. So as you know, the last several presentations about purchasing trucks with Ford and Chevy, these large trucks, the F-250s and above, the Superduties, they're hard to get. So National Auto Fleet had one set aside for us that we're able to meet, build to meet our needs with the crane on there, like you said, and the generator and the liftgate, so that they're able to do all of their work. Our original budget for, well, I said on the last page, was $200,000. The price that came in for this is $208,000. So it's just a little over our budget, but we'd like to lock in our price now and utilize that price because it's going to take several months to finish building out the truck. So just the financial cost breakdown, again, the $200,000, and the price coming in at 208, but with the other trucks that we haven't been able to purchase in the Public Works Trucks accounts, we're able to utilize those funds to make up the difference. So no budget amendment. We're able to utilize existing funds to make this purchase. With that, staff is requesting city council approval of alternative number one for the purchase of the truck, and I'm available for any questions.
So same question. This is coming out of the Water Fund?
Yes.
So not the general?
This will be Water Enterprise funding, yes.
Water Enterprise Fund. So again, not hitting our general fund. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I do actually have a question.
Vice Mayor Bowie?
I understand that the funds come, it's not coming out from the general fund, but why are we not doing RFPQ? Why do we want to waive the right to an RFPQ?
So Sourcewell, what Sourcewell does is they're a big national contract. So they actually go out to RFP, and they do it on a national level and get hundreds of thousands of vehicles available to try to get the best available price. So it just helps us cut down on a lot of staff time and a lot of process of trying to go to find individual vehicles to be built when that process has already been done for us.
Okay. Are they the only source, resource out there?
No, there are others that do it. They're just one of the biggest that offers the best value.
Have you ever, I'm just curious. Have you ever compared? Because I want, you know, I want to make sure we get the best buck for our taxpayers, right? Not because they're the biggest one out there, it doesn't mean they might have the best price.
We have. In the past, there's a couple other ones we've looked at. A lot of them have kind of consolidated to this Sourcewell, though. So there are, I think, a couple little smaller ones, but they don't compete anywhere like Sourcewell does.
Okay. I trust you for that. I just want to make sure that our public knows that because, you know, some of it is, why are we waiving our right, right? Okay. All right. You answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Yes, I approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Constantine.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Keneen. Let's vote.
Item number 15 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay. The final item of the evening. City of Fountain Valley Six Month Strategic Objectives Adoption for May 23, 2024 through September 26, 2024. Presentation by Maggie Lee. Welcome, Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to wrap the city council meeting up tonight, and so hopefully on a positive note. So as you know, on, every six months, city council, including city staff, we get together to plan for our next six-month strategic objectives. And so during this session, we kind of focus on, you know, what we have accomplished and proud of in the last, in the prior six months. I'm happy to report, you know, what we had identified in our feedback based on what the consultant was seeking for. We have, at minimum, 50 accomplishments in the last six months, based on the input that was provided by city staff. And I will go ahead and highlight some of the key one. All of it is very important in general, but I think there are some that we definitely want to highlight. We were able to proceed with short-term rental enforcement, and we're happy to share, you know, we were able to identify only two that was currently on social media, not social media, on Airbnb, and staff has been very aggressive in bringing that to nothing. Performing a memorable state-of-the-city event in the new informative, entertaining format at the Sagon Grand Center with a net profit of $10,000 that we supported the Fountain Valley Kiwanis. We working closely with OC TA to complete and open all the interchains and bridges and express lane for the I-45 Improvement Project. HR staff processed 245 Personnel Action Form, 25 new hires, and five appointment changes, and six promotions since November of 2023. We coordinated the day of service, planted approximately 2,400 Gazanis, G-A-Z-A-N-I-A-S, and spread 40 yards of mulch. We painted all citywide medians. HR officially launched our new Gov onboarding, which make it easier for new hires to start with the city. Community service staff were elected to local and state boards. Firewall didn't get affected by major vulnerabilities that were happening nationwide. Added redundancy to the backup system. We had a successful Fire Ops 101 where elected official and city management staff were able to protect. General Plan Update Approval, which was at least a three-year process, and we appreciate the community involvement and also the GPAC and city council who were participating in this full three-year process. We hired three new firefighters. We completed our first comprehensive fire department annual report. Sorry. So those are some of the highlights of the success we've done in the last six months. We did discuss, you know, opportunities that missed. A lot of those were identified that is really out of the city control, but we did identify to recognize those are some of the challenges, and we did discuss in-depth the challenges on the horizon that the city has experienced, including unhoused population. And then we did some team-building exercise as part of the day, and then we went into the strategic objective, break out into different session on strategic objective. And I want to go ahead and highlight some of items that we were able to identify and it's available as an attachment in the staff report. Before I go in-depth on some of those strategic objectives, I want to go ahead and revisit the city vision statement. Fountain Valley is a safe, inclusive, and desirable community where you can live your best life. The Fountain Valley Mission Statement includes the city Fountain Valley is a team-driven organization committed to providing excellent service to our community through our core values. Our core values include fiscal stability, honesty, integrity, and ethical behavior, teamwork, innovation, quality of life, and excellent customer service. The three goals that we continue to work on include enhance the culture and environment of a nice place to live, achieve fiscal stability by evaluating processes, and attract and retain revenue-producing businesses and opportunities, attract and retain quality staff through best practices and trends, maintain, build, and modernize infrastructure to support growth and future needs of the city. Under the goal one, to enhance the culture and environment of a nice place to live, one of the items that I think the community would benefit include present parking enforcement outsource option. I think there's opportunity there for the city to, you know, potentially, you know, enforce the parking challenges throughout the city, and at the same time, providing opportunity for the city to generate additional revenue. With the vacancy in PD and also, you know, the time and effort that it would take, it was suggested that we look at option to see if we can outsource that and have a regular enforcement effort throughout the city, including around Myers-Surow Park and other areas such as Edinger that has been discussed tonight. So when we go into achieve fiscal stability and evaluate processes and attract, or actually, on that strategic objective, staff had identified potential $200,000 costs, potentially, if we go down that route. There are revenue that will be generated from that that will offset the cost of potential option, if that's something city council would be interested. And we will bring that back to city council for your consideration by August 20, 2024. Related to achieve fiscal stability, we will present an update to the city reserve policy for adoption. We have not had a clearly defined reserve policy, and, you know, with our current finance director, we recognize that that is very important for the city and straight to the point what those policy is and how, you know, the community can associate with that. And ideally, the reserve policy should tie in our annual expenditure where it's straightforward. We continue to implement the Economic Development Action Plan with a focus on the northeast section of the city. I think, you know, in the last year, there's a lot of conversation and city council desire to focus in that area because, you know, it seems like over the year, those resident in those areas feel like they're neglected, and so economic development will try to focus in that area to bring a higher value or more participation and services in that region. We move forward to attract and retain quality staff through best practices and trend, present and employees recruitment and referral program for the police department. We recognize over the last, you know, few years, that continue to be a challenge for us, and by having consistent vacancies and so forth, it impacts the current police officer based on schedule. It impacts the ability for us to, you know, be in the field patrol and provide that security of being safe in the community, which is a priority for elected official. And having this in place, which other community has already have a program very similar to that, it is a referral opportunity for us to recruit officer and dispatch and fill those vacancies sooner than later. And I think we are targeting a budget of $50,000, so ideally, $10,000 per referral, and we'll focus, you know, getting five and reevaluate if that, if this program is beneficial. And the police chief will come back on August 20 to present that to city council for your consideration. And if we get the thumbs up, our team is ready to, you know, proceed with that. And this would help both HR, finance, and PD in itself because by having the vacancy filled, we would bring down the overtime costs as well, which is important for us to cut the costs. And then from HR standpoint, you know, they can focus on other matters that require their attention. And then the other one is to present option for an employees housing assistance program. We will make an adjustment to this, and we'll remove the budget of potentially $500,000. City councils just want to hear what those options are at this point in time, and then they will, you will provide us with further direction, how you want to proceed with that. And then the last goal is to maintain, rebuild, and modernize infrastructure to support growth and future needs of the city. We will bring back present Fire Station One funding option. I'm looking at it. Is it in the right category? Yes, I think it is. So we're in the process of designing the future Fire Station One, and so as part of that process, we need to identify what are some of those funding options. The mayor and our fire chief, including, you know, Megan Wischner, who worked on an application for federal funding, and we are in the pipeline potentially of receiving $20 million. And, you know, we're not going to celebrate now. Hopefully, by the end of summer, we will have a general idea if we will receive that funding exactly. We're hopeful, so. And then...
You better not have just jinxed that because we haven't said that number yet. But, okay, go ahead.
If I jinxed it, I'm going to have a very hard time to accept that. And then the other one is audit all our software citywide to identify cost-saving opportunity and potential consolidation. And then, you know, we have a lot of software application available, and over the years, it become very costly. So we want to do an audit to make sure that if we have any, I guess, software that employees no longer need, we can go ahead and reduce those costs. And our IT director will work closely with our management team to make sure that we can have some potential cost-saving in that area. And then the last one is artificial intelligence. There's a lot of discussion right now. So our each IT director will closely monitor all the professional association and see if there's any policy and procedure that we can review and assess to see if it's something that would be beneficial in the community. So that are the strategic objectives we have identified, to name a few. So staff is looking, oh, in addition to that, we would like to pivot on the schedule of the strategic, moving the next strategic to September, and then six months from that would be in March, allowing us the ability, should there need to have, to include a budget, we can include it during mid-year or at, you know, the budget process for the following fiscal year. So this would definitely be beneficial to our finance director as he prepared mid-year and the budget process. That concludes my presentation. Staff is looking for city council to approve the strategic objective, and we will be coming back on a monthly basis to provide an update to city council where we stand on these objectives.
Any questions?
So?
Yeah.
I do.
Councilman Harper?
Thank you. I'm okay with the things, except I think we should take the budget out of all of them. There's a couple other ones that were, if you go back to the last slide. Yeah, I think the budget should be blank for both of those. You, I agree, you guys should work on the program and then come back to us with a budget on that because we haven't approved anything, as far as I know. And the same with the parking enforcement back on the first slide. I would leave that blank until, and then, once it's presented to us, then we can decide if, whatever.
Yeah. I think, my opinion, I don't disagree with you. I completely agree with you, but it's, I think the problem is the word budget, because if it says budget, it sounds like it's budgeted, and it's not. So...
But you can take the column out, then.
Or target, target, you know, something, you know, potential. I mean, it was just a, what is the estimated cost it might be?
Or you could say it's, well, yeah, I don't know. I think once you put a number in there, to me, it's like we've sort of...
Yeah. I think we were doing that just to come up with an idea. Is it $5,000 or $500,000? What's the impact? So that's why we were kind of throwing some numbers in there. But it's, but you're right. The word budget makes it sound like that's what we're agreeing to. So...
I think in the past, we didn't have this column.
Yeah, we could take that out. That's fine. Because, and what, I'm sorry, Councilmember Constantine, you were next.
Yeah. So the next strategic planning meeting then would be Thursday, September 26.
Correct.
So instead of the November. So we're going to shift, shift the meetings, you know, moving forward then from November and May to September and March.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll mark that down.
So one thing I want to be clear about, too, is that these are all conceptual ideas. This isn't anything that anybody has agreed to. It's, let's get information, and you may wonder about our study sessions. Sometimes we have study sessions prior to a meeting. This, the study sessions come directly from this document. So we'll pull an item off this document on a particular month, and that would be the study session or two for that meeting. And that's how we just then give direction at that point, and then it comes back as an agendized item if there's consensus from the council to keep moving forward. Or we tell you to kill it, or modify it, or whatever it is, or... So I just want to kind of explain a little bit of the process of what we use this for.
Yes. So in the past, we didn't have that budget column. The reason why we included that budget column is to give city council the potential cost of the objective in itself. So if you want us to completely move, remove that budget column, I'd be more than happy to remove that.
Yeah, I think we get in direction to remove that. That's fine. Because we have no clue. It could be $100,000. It could be a million, you know, because we don't even know what the plan is yet. It's just a first step. So it's a guesstimate. Okay. On that, any other questions for our city manager? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Constantine. Second?
I'll second.
By Councilmember Harper. Let's vote. Nice job, Maggie. Thank you.
Item 16 passes 5-0.
All right. Councilmember Items for Future Consideration. Not seeing any. City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Public Comments, Unscheduled Matters Only. Anybody who hasn't spoken yet. Not seeing anybody. Let's move on. City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, AB one-two-three-four. General Comments. Councilmember Constantine.
Sure. Just some of the activities I went to since the last meeting include the, well, here was the Youth in Government Day Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. It was the prom night themed dance. Watched the Board of Supervisors meetings. There was an author event at the library recently. And of course, we had Summerfest, the Fountain Valley Car Show and Government Affairs Committee meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harper.
Thank you. Just again, I want to extend my congratulations to Chief Shepherd on his, on his retirement. Thank you for all your dedication and love for the City of Fountain Valley. Really appreciate it. On June fifth, attended the Central City Navigation Ribbon Cutting, June tenth, OCTA Board Meeting, June twelfth, OCTA Finance Committee Meeting. And the Finance Committee Meeting was interesting. We, we receive economic forecasts a couple of times a year and we received one from UCLA who noted that overall sales tax is slowing down. They expect to decline a little bit and then recover next year. But overall, which was kind of a surprise to me, the state of California is, is getting a huge infusion of venture capital. When you look at all the venture capital being spent throughout the US, California, San Jose is, is getting most of it. It's all, a lot of it's AI related. So the investment in California is surprisingly strong. On June thirteenth, OCTA Transit Committee Meeting, last Friday, the Sober Living Task Force Meeting, where there's a group of cities that meet to discuss sober living issues. And so we heard an update, there really not too much update since last meeting, but there are a few legislative bills that we're watching. And then also on Friday, attended the Summerfest opening and the drone show. And once again, great job to Parks and Rec, the Community Foundation, everybody involved at Summerfest. Great event. Thanks. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Harvard. Councilman Keneen.
Thank you, Mayor. My activities since our last meeting included the following. On June fifth, I was very proud to attend the grand opening of the Central Cities Navigation Center in Garden Grove with my council colleagues and city staff. After the ceremony, I was honored to get a tour of the interior with project engineer Sarah Becker PE. That's professional engineers for the PEs in the house. Just saying. Who was so pleased to show her work. This is truly an amazing space where the unhoused population, people that are sincerely seeking assistance and lasting change can best experience both transitional housing and recovery. On June sixth, I attended the OCTA's Elected Officials Roundtable with Vice Mayor Bowie, where we learned more about the OC Transit Vision Master Plan and selected our top three from twelve choices of transit opportunity corridors. I had gone through this exercise last April during my work with the OCTA Citizens Advisory Committee. So OC, OCTA staff are pushing to get timely feedback from all stakeholders prior to board presentation. On June fourteenth, I attended the opening ceremonies of the Hyundai sponsored drone show at the Summerfest, massive party over at Miles Square Park. Huge thanks to all those who made this, again, the event in our city. And lastly, I want to thank all those in our city who took the time to complete the communicate, the community satisfaction survey. I have read all the feedback. I believe all the, that we all benefit from your responses as we work towards improving our city experiences. So thanks again. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Keneen. Vice Mayor Bowie.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Shepherd, wish, once again, wishing all you all the best. And we're serious. We're looking for that cup of coffee before you depart. Thank you. On June fifth, I attend Youth Government Day. And in the afternoon, along with my colleague, we attend the ribbon cutting of our new Central City Navigation Center. On June sixth, I attend OCTA Transit Vision Elected Official, as mentioned with my colleague Jim Keneen. In the evening, I attend Cal City OC Division Meeting and our city manager was present as well. On June eighth, I attend OC SAN Open House. And once again, congratulation to OC SAN. It was such a success, successful open house, well-attended and every staff was present. They greet everyone and from executive all the way down to, you know, the lowest level in the OC SAN. So it was great seeing everyone out there. Great job. On June thirteen, I attend OC Waste Management. June fourteen, along with my council member, I attend Fountain Valley Summerfest Opening Day. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bowie. So for me, again, chief, you're almost there, almost at the end of the last council meeting. So appreciate all the service you've given to our community for, for decades. Again, Father's Day, wish everybody a happy Father's Day over the last couple of days ago. On Wednesday, June fifth, I attended the Youth in Government Day. What fun was that? There were tons of third graders, right? That were here, here from Cox and Courageous, I think it was. It was a. It was Courageous. Cox and Courageous. Got it right. So yeah, it was great. And they got to learn about all the different departments. So that was a lot of fun. And then later that day, the Central Cities Navigation Center Ribbon Cutting, I was able to give a speech on behalf of the city and PCTA did a great job covering that. I just saw the clips today from all of us who were there. And I want to thank you guys for attending and look for that on Channel Three in the city website. On Saturday, June eighth, I attended the OC SAN Open House. As Vice Mayor Bowie mentioned, it was packed and very informative. And then later that day, I attended the Celebration of Life for Shirley Detloff, former mayor of the City of Huntington Beach, as well as Chair for the Fountain Valley Regional Hospital, now UCI Health and on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club. On Sunday, June ninth, I provided the welcome message for Fountain Valley Baccalaureate Ceremony. It was exciting to be in front of all the graduates in my alma mater, Fountain Valley High School, Go Barons. On Thursday, June thirteenth, I gave, it was great, the third grade presentation at Cox Elementary. They brought all the third graders in to the auditorium and I went in there and they just grilled me with questions. And it was amazing, the questions they had. They had, you know, their number one issue was homelessness, you know? They were like, hey, I'm walking to school and I see it, you know, what, what are we going to do about it, you know? So even the third graders noticed it. They also knew a lot about inflation, which was interesting. Yeah. And the price, you know, the cost of buying stuff at the store and getting stuff at the, I don't want to say Starbucks, because the smoothies or whatever. Yeah. Yeah. And, yeah. And the, I just did. And then the, the, they wanted to know if the mayor can ban smoking because it's really bad. There was a lot of them who wanted that. I thought it was really cute. Then on Thursday, June thirteenth, through the sixteenth Summerfest, the drone show, everything, the bands, the Vietnamese special cultural day on Sunday. You know, I mentioned earlier, Nora, Selena, Tammy, Rob, Christie. What an event. It truly was an amazing event. And I, I set it up on stage and I'll say it again right now. I've never been more proud to be the mayor of the City of Fountain Valley than seeing what happened at that event and all the families having fun. It truly was great. On Friday, June fourteenth, the Cal Cities OC Division Board Meeting, Sober Living Task Course Meeting that was mentioned, back to Summerfest. On the fifteenth, the Fountain Valley Car Show, and I got to give out the mayor's trophy. I know nothing about cars. My wife knows everything about cars. So it should have been the mayor's wife's trophy because she picked it. She knows a lot about that. So anyway, I have other things too. Let's see, talked about the Vietnamese country. Anyway, that's enough of that. I want to close the meeting tonight in, in honor of Koniko Ishii and Koniko Ishii, also known as Cooney, who passed at the age of a hundred and four. She was the wife of Charles Ishii who sat on the first Fountain Valley City Council, previously, previously known as Talbert. Cooney spent four years in an internment camp in Jerome, Arkansas, and Charles served in the four hundred and forty-second Combat Unit prior to their marriage in nineteen forty-six. Charles tended to the Ishii family farm in Talbert, growing asparagus, tomatoes and bell peppers. Cooney celebrated her hundred and fourth birthday last November amongst, I'm sorry, last November amongst friends and family. Hair in place, manicure perfect, dressed to the nines with blinged out shoes. Cooney was an amazing lady and will be truly missed. And Steve Nagels here, former mayor, his wife, it's her cousin, Cooney. And, you know, I, I talked about the Vietnamese Cultural Center event on Sunday on social media and I got a little bit of pushback on that from certain people saying, you know, that's, that's not what Fountain Valley is about or, you know, that's not the Fountain Valley I grew up in. Well, let me tell you, the Japanese farmers, when those families came in and took over those areas and stuff, that's not the Fountain Valley that they knew. So this is the history and, and the fact that, you know, we're talking about internment camps for people from Fountain Valley. I mean, it's, it's amazing. So Steve, I want to personally thank you for sharing this and appreciate your patience today. Give my love to Nina. She's an amazing person. And on that note, we're going to close the meeting. Meeting adjourned.